Okay, good evening, everybody. It is April 1st, 2021. And I will start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our order of business this evening is our open session call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. Do we have any student presentations, Jim? Are the student council coming?
No, I don't believe so.
No.
They have they have a senior volleyball game tonight. Is that correct?
Okay. Yeah. Okay. We'll have time for public comment. And then our administrative items include superintendent's update COVID-19, school start times 2021, 2022, superintendent's mid-cycle review, Driscoll Scholarship Committee appointment, Assistant Superintendent update, warrant approvals, approval of minutes February 7th, 2021, March 12th, 2021, acceptance of gifts and donations if there are any, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will move to enter into executive session under 21A3 to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair so declares and not to return to open session. Ashland Educators Association teacher contract. Take the roll call and just ask you all to please just confirm that you're okay with the order of business this evening. Mark Terry?
President, yes.
Aaron Williams?
President, yes.
Kathy Bates?
President and yes.
Paul Kendo?
Here and yes.
Thank you. Okay, so there are no student presentations this evening, so I will start by asking whether there's anybody here from the public that would like to offer comment. And if there is somebody who would like to share, please unmute yourself or raise your hand to let me know that you're wanting to talk. Okay, I don't see anybody. And then seeing none, I will turn it over to you, Jim, for the update and the COVID-19 update.
Great, thank you. As I've grown accustomed to doing, thank you to Ed, Audrey, our entire nursing staff. It's still a tremendous amount of work. I think what we're finding out, especially with the pool testing, you know, Maureen Winsec and Erin Gaiaro at the high school and supported by other staff, you know, are doing a phenomenal job. And I just want to say publicly, thank you and to them and to Ed and Audrey for the continued outreach to us at the schools and in keeping us abreast of what's happening within our community. I'll share the data with you in a moment and let Ed and Audrey speak to some things that have been happening, but what I want to emphasize and continue to emphasize within our community and is that we still have to be vigilant while there are numbers of folks within our community who are being vaccinated. It's still a concern of all of ours that that everyone still take the virus seriously. Wear our masks, don't let our guard down. And if we do those things, you know, we're going to have a very successful opening of schools and that starts on Monday with the Warren and Mendez schools coming back in full time. And I can tell you that in walking through the schools and I see Claudia smile that even, you know, yesterday, walking through the buildings as teachers were really hunkered in their rooms, preparing and getting ready for kids. Then when I stopped into those rooms, the it was very palpable, the excitement and the energy level of wanting and waiting for those children to come on Monday, which was really, it was great to see and what the teachers, while it's different in an elementary room with desks, you know, and, and, you know, three to four feet apart and some even greater that it it's still exciting for the teachers. And even one teacher said to me yesterday, hey, Jim, you know, I was setting my classroom up and all of a sudden I realized, wait a minute, this group of kids, I can move over here because they're in the same reading group and then they're all within like, it was really just like this mind of how they were setting up their room, right? And how how to make it as efficient and fun, especially at the K5 level, we're still in that that time where we want our students to be having fun. Not that we don't at the high school, we're just saying, you know, at that age, it's that energy that's often there. And the one thing we talked a lot about and I did with staff yesterday was we have to think about this as the beginning of a new year, right? I mean, these first few days and first week is about building community, spending a lot of time on our social emotional needs of our kids and our teaching staff and in our parents and nurses and making sure that the routines are, are, you know, being established. And and by the end of the week, you know, I hope that as we do those things, we'll certainly ramp up that educational component again, because we certainly understand there's a lacking of you know, that over the past year of being able to fully invest all the academic time that we need. So so it's exciting. I think that staff is excited. Bus routes have been posted. The principals have also emailed out. I have an email going out tonight after this meeting where our, you know, the bus routes, the links and things of that nature. So Erin Palina, you know, a thank you to you and the hard work that you've had to do with all the new registrations coming in for busing. And that's, you know, it's a heck of a lot of work to reroute everything and and make sure that we're we're capturing all the kids. And and for those who are watching this, if if your child is not picked up, make sure you give us a buzz and we'll figure that out. But again, just like the beginning of the new year, our our busing will will take some time to make sure it gets squared away. So let me share anything before I share this week's data.
Just curious Jim, how many more people we are having sign up for the buses?
Erin, you want to answer that? I think she said 125. Maybe it was a little more. Erin, you there? Or maybe you're just logged in.
Eighty-seven so far.
Eighty-seven, okay. That's across K5s.
Uh, no, that's
All the district.
All of them.
Okay, so 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 we feel comfortable still with some pretty good social distancing on buses.
Yes.
Yeah, so thank you. Anything else? Okay. So let me show this week's data. And you'll see that it's pretty consistent with last week's data, right? Didn't change all that dramatically in terms of the numbers. But overall, again, we're we're in a position where we're in the yellow. You'll notice that we we've had a couple of student age kids and we've seen that email come out this week. Again, even though in one, one area, we found close contacts and you'll notice it's actually at the Pittaway School where we we closed down a room. Again, no one there tested positive. The close contacts are are coming back negative and that's been consistent with all of our you know, process throughout the year. And again, it's because of our protocols. We're wearing masks and the data is really clear about wearing masks. And if you're wearing masks, the ability to transmit COVID-19 or any other viruses, airborne viruses is significantly reduced to almost, you know, zero, according to the Mayo Clinic and when they did that research. It's we're seeing at the state level, the numbers go up. I think that's a concern for folks as we spend two weeks before we get into the April break. More and more people are being vaccinated and I think some are feeling a little more relaxed and that's what I wrote in my email yesterday was we need to, while it's it's a nice feeling and there are, there's more comfort and the weather is nicer, we still have to be cautious in our approach with regard to our outside activities. I feel really comfortable with what we're doing inside our schools. And that's important. From a athletic standpoint, you'll notice that I think it was Hopkinton and Medfield went up more significantly than, you know, Holliston went down. I don't have, Kelly, do you know who we're playing tonight in the?
It's Holliston, Jim.
It's Holliston, okay. Okay, that's what I thought. I wasn't sure. I didn't want to say it without being specific. And we have, I think, two more weeks to go, eight, maybe three. April 26 or somewhere on there is when I think the next spring sports begin. So so again, knock on wood, I want to, you know, congratulate Steven and the work that he's done in all of our athletic arenas to, you know, ensure that the physical distancing was set up, but also the use of the sanitizer and the cleanliness and and following all the protocols that were set forth. He's he's done a heck of a job, so hopefully that continues. And apparently, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't say we got our Thanksgiving Day win this past weekend. So against Hopkinton. But in so again, next week, hybrid for the middle and the high school. We're not changing anything. We're, next Wednesday is important. I've also relayed this before. That's a day where it'll be asynchronous just for that Wednesday for middle and high school only. Everyone else is in school where our teachers can get prepared. And, you know, I did have a couple of questions. Why do they need to? I'm telling you, when we walk in and I and I saw yesterday firsthand, the amount of time the teachers were spending actually trying to, while we were putting desk in rooms, like our custodial staff was at the high school, Paul and I were there this week. They were there late and they were bringing in desk and setting up tables and and they're still moving stuff next week and over the weekend into the buildings to get these classrooms ready for teachers, because remember, we we moved half of everything out of every building. And now, and those were empty buildings. So now we're trying to to, we have to certain limited amount of time, we can get things back in. And then the teachers can set the rooms up. Questions on the data or Ed or Audrey, you know, I think the story again is a lot of household contact. No transmission within schools, even though we've had someone in school that was positive. This week's pool testing identified an individual within the pool. Maureen Winsec, you know, and Audrey and Erin and everyone did a great job. We were able to do the rapid binex testing yesterday as well. So we called, we, I'll say they called the the individuals within the pool and had them come to the high school immediately or when they could through the five o'clock hour and had everyone tested. We were able to identify the individual. That per only, only that person goes into quarantine until we find close contacts of that individual. And that's what they were doing today, identifying the close contacts and last night. So so I think the system worked. You know, I know that there's frustration. I'd be remiss not to say that with our, from our nursing team, because it's so much work. And the 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 system itself is a little clunky in terms of the database. So when a family emails to say they don't want in or they signed up, it's a, it's a, and I've been working with the support group of Ginkgo, which is the company we use to try to find a better way to provide the data to our nursing staff, because they've, when you have new people sign up, you have to recreate pools of of students and you have to have at least five individuals in a pool and up to 10. So when kids, for instance, if we were using kids in a pool and some don't show up for the testing, maybe because they emailed me and or Kelly and or Maureen and we, you know, I'll be the one to say, I didn't remove a kid. So they would call, be called down to say, hey, I'm, you know, you're signed up and nope, actually, my parents unsigned me up or unregistered. And so then they've have a pool set up already with that individual. So it drops below the total number of people. So so it's been frustrating. The state has has offered to pay for the remainder of the year to do pool testing. And, you know, I think we said we would revisit our conversation after the the April break to see what that looks like. We're still running at less than 20% of the high school population.
Did you get any response after you sent out the email? I guess it was just yesterday advising people that we we caught an asymptomatic positive. Anybody sort of responding by saying, I guess there's value there and signing up?
No. There was no response. That being said, I don't know if we had more. I don't know if we had more people sign up. Kelly might know better. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the database that I put together. But I know Maureen emailed me tonight and was going through the list to see if more people signed up. So we were able to to check off, I use, you know, Matthew, for instance, right? So I have to each week, I know Matt, Matthew's participating. We, you can't print out just new people who signed up, which is, I don't know how these companies have a database where you can't disaggregate data, new data that comes in easily. Well, they don't. And so I've got to take it, convert it from a CSV to an Excel file and then it was putting names together. So Matthew Terry was one. Well, we have it broken out by last name, first name. So now you have to disaggregate the Matthew Terry piece for everybody and then compare the lists each week. So we probably do have some people sign up, Mark, that's new, but I won't know until, you know, later.
All right then.
Yeah, so.
We probably had about eight come down this morning thinking they were signed up, so they were new.
So right, so that probably was from the letter and they wouldn't have been in the pool until they'll they'll be in the pool next week. Yeah, thank you, Kelly. Yeah. But we also had some that you called down that thought they were withdrawn too. So maybe a net, a net wash. Ed, Audrey, what are you seeing out there? Can you fill them in?
I think one of the things that we're definitely noticing over the last two weeks is definitely a parent becoming positive and then it's spreading through the whole house really quickly. So it's including the kids and other adults in the houses. We're seeing that pretty much across the board.
And we don't know if it's the new variant, right? I mean, they're not, they're not pulling that and testing that all of our cases, so.
Right.
But that's, that is a, you know, I think that is a what's the word I'm looking for? It's an indicator.
The new variants, they're saying a characteristic is that it spreads more quickly than
Quickly, right.
than the first one.
And we're, and and that's what's interesting is that we're seeing it like we'll see a positive, for example, a positive parent. And then let's say there's three other people. We're seeing the other three will test positive like within 48 to 72 hours.
So does that mean that there's any different? Anything you have to do to change your protocols or practices?
No, no, we're we're still following all the, we're doing everything the same. You know, if if they're asymptomatic, you know, we're asking them the way to day five to be tested. But a lot of these people are getting symptomatic, so they're going to get tested prior to that five days.
The one thing I want to jump on there is the frustration that exists at our admin level, Audrey's level, Ed's level. We can't emphasize enough, if someone in your household has symptoms and is being tested, everyone needs to stay home until that test result comes back in. So the this week, we've had a household, those household transmissions. Well, those individuals were being tested. Still decided, oh, it might be appropriate to send my child to school. And that person's positive or ends up being positive, right? And and then now you, that that child is a close contact, they should be home waiting. So then we're not putting anyone else in the community at risk. That being said, I talk about that and because of, I think, our protocols and the way we do things, when making sure everyone's wearing their mask and cleaning their hands and disinfecting. Even in those instances, we're not seeing transmission in the schools.
And and one of the other things I think that's helping to make sure we have no transmission in the schools is that what I do is I check the database every morning by 6:00 AM so that we can literally be on the phone, making sure, don't send your kid to school, you know, we're, we're on the phone like 6:30, quarter or seven in the morning, making sure kids are not getting on buses.
Or we're just pulling them as soon as they walk in. Which is, which is what we do. Audrey told me about a case this morning.
Oh, no. Go back to the poll testing. It is a lot of work for the nurses, but the nurses don't mind the work. They actually like it. Their frustration is more in the system. The kids that aren't coming, they have to call the kids down. Some kids, there's confusion whether they're in the pool or not in the pool. They're they're frustrated with the computer system, not, you know. So they're not really, they're not upset about the work. They have to do the work. It's just everything else that they're finding frustrating.
Yeah, I certainly did. I don't want it to come across, they're they're complaining about work. It's the system itself, right? It's it's the frustration that exists and and we're trying, my job is to, I've always said is the administrator, my job is to try to reduce their anxiety and take that pressure off from their table and off from, and that's what I'm doing. And that's what I told Maureen, you know, I will work on. I will make sure by the time this weekend is over that we have a system in place that's so much easier for her and and Erin. So they don't have to worry as much about the numbers and the accuracy of the numbers.
That's a lot of work, that extra work, yeah.
So so we will take that off their plate. But other than that, you know, again, it's exciting. And I will be coming forth. I I've got to formulate some thoughts. I just want to plant the seed. Mr. St. Curran and I have had this conversation went in a different direction this morning, only because of frustration. But, you know, thinking about our testing of of high school students, but senior week activities, ensuring that our, you know, our students are safe and COVID free during that time period. If we do senior week activities, if we have, you know, thinking about spring sports. And then potentially rolling this out because it's free in another one of our buildings and and working with staff and students and families on on the selection of the building. And and really with our nursing staff, I think we're we're trying to identify which building would be the best to roll out the pool testing. And again, it comes with complexity, partly because that database has to be cleaned up again and or cleaned up. So if we go to a new building and all these families register their kids, it all gets dumped into the same database. So it's not, I can't just say, okay, here are high school kids and here are Mindest kids. That's not how it the data gets put into the system. So you actually have to then disaggregate it based on date of birth. And believe me, I have some staff that are pretty close to our our seniors in age and I've got to make sure I'm, I had one, one staff member, I think I was starting to put into the the student pool. I was like, wait a minute, nope, they they're they're now doing, you know, substitute work or ESP work or something of that nature. Further questions on that?
Any questions on the chart, same model of learning? Well, next week we have a change and no meeting tomorrow.
Correct.
Okay, ready to move on to the next item, school start times?
Yeah, this is for next year, obviously. I I I think it's in our best interest and I want to get this out to teachers, families and students and our bus drivers. I'm recommending that we maintain the exact same time period, school start and end times that we have this year for next year. I I think in talking to Aaron and thinking about Aaron Palini and thinking about our COVID response in the fall, because we certainly don't anticipate all students and are going to be even eligible for vaccination, et cetera, that we maintain the same start times. High school and middle school or middle school would typically be at the same time and sharing the bus. And overcrowding, you know, has always been a concern. But what I want to make sure is that for at least one more year that we allow for four bus routes. It's not, it's not costing us anything more to do this. Is that correct, Chris? We looked into the contract?
I'm still chatting with the vendor right now on the cost side of it. They will do it, but we're working through some details on the costs.
Okay, in years past, we were at four and we reduced to three. Didn't really adjust our, our so I guess we'll work through that. So again, would you rather, I guess, have information on that before we take a vote?
What's the range of cost we could be looking at? Do we have a sense of that?
I don't. So, Chris?
I mean, I have a sense of the cost. I just don't know. I need, I need some clarity. It's an hourly charge that they're trying, that they're asking us to, um, essentially, it's $35 per day, but I I haven't been able to isolate if it's, you know, just on the buses on that extra tier or not. So that's what we're working through. So I don't have a full cost range yet.
So if we're talking 19 buses?
If it's for everybody, it's $120,000.
Okay.
But I don't know that, that that's what I'm working through.
Now, we do have, again, to that, to that end, we will have additional federal COVID funds that are coming in that could help offset transportation costs. So I think, you know.
Is there any, is there any downside to waiting till we have all the information?
No, no, I only if it was like a million dollars, Paul. That, I mean.
I think Paul's point is, is there, is there any reason not to wait till our next meeting?
Right, that was my question too. Is it okay to not vote tonight until we have all the information?
Is there any reason to vote before we have all the information?
Right.
No, that's, no. Okay, fair enough. I didn't think it was going to be a big cost differential based on our past experience when we moved tiers. So okay.
Yeah, let's just take the vote next time, even if it's not, at least we'll, if you don't need the answer right now, the motion right now, we might as well do it when we have all the information.
Okay.
And and it could be next Friday, right? So.
Well, that's when I think we, it should be because Aaron, I mean, Aaron Palini would tell you, we need it right away so we can get next year's registrations and busing out, because some folks may look at it differently. Some may choose to take the bus that wouldn't take the bus if it was crowded with middle and high school kids. And so we want to get those out as quickly as possible. We are coming into April.
That's why we're asking. So is holding it up between now and next week going to be a problem?
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to go later because we have the the May date that changes the
The rate, so.
Okay, good. So we'll put it on for next Friday?
That's fine. So but let me.
Does that give you time, Chris, to figure out whatever it is we need to know?
Yeah, we shouldn't need more than another, you know, business day, maybe two business days.
So
Excellent.
Again, I, before we sign off from this, I want to be clear, we are looking at starting exactly the same time, so 7:30, 8, 8:30 and 9.
We're not changing anything from this year.
We would not, I will not be asking us to change anything. So I just want you, want you to be clear, that's where we're headed. And if you have questions on that, I certainly could answer that now.
No concerns there from me. Anybody else?
I just think it's a good, safe, cautious approach. So okay, thank you. And we'll get back to you.
Okay, so next up, you will see mid-cycle review and you might know, have noticed that it's April. And we are a little bit beyond the mid-cycle. Jim and I have, did talk about it a couple of weeks ago, but it's been a busy, a busy year and I know other committees are in the same predicament. But in any event, and certainly I do know that, just for the benefit of the community, that the committee members, I I know for myself, but I'm, I know that it's true for everybody else, you know, any concerns that we would have had along the way. Jim would have been open to them prior to now, but certainly as part of the evaluation process that we adopted, we do a mid-cycle check-in, really. It's not a full review and it's really just an opportunity for the committee to to, uh, let Jim know whether, you know, from our perspective, he is on track to meeting the goals that we set at the beginning of the year. So it gives Jim the opportunity to correct anything. It gives us the opportunity to communicate things that we're concerned about. Um, and if everything's great, it gives us an opportunity to say, you know, good job, let's keep going. So that's where we're at in the process and, uh, committee members, uh, you've all done this many times before. So you know the drill for this one. It's really just, um, you letting me know between now and the next meeting. Whether, uh, there's anything that you want Jim to know or that whether you want me to share as a committee. So that he has that information. Um, and then we'll talk at the next meeting about how, uh, how, where, where we're at with the goal process. Does anybody have any questions about that or comments, concerns?
Sorry, Laura, check out Paul.
No, no, good, Mark.
I was just gonna, we're gonna do that at our next regular meeting, not, um, not a Friday morning.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I guess I have one question for Jim, just, you know, as you, I haven't, and you know the reason why I haven't gone through your, uh, your, your mid-cycle thing sent out yet. Was there anything we, we have on the, on that, uh, and your goals? That now that we're this far along in the, that is just something that we should probably, you know, change the priority on given what's going on or, or something to, to not, you know, get to a, a review cycle and say, hey, listen, this hasn't been attained, but we already know it's not going to be attained because of, you know, the many different things that have been going on. Is there anything that we need you, you, you would like us to think, uh, consider adjusting?
Yeah. So let me, I want to, can I, I'm gonna share my screen, Lori, and, and share with, with everyone what I sent out to you. And because it does address Paul's question, um, because I wrote that in there.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't.
No, no worries. No, 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 no. Yeah, I do know. So, um, but that being said, so when we thought about goals this year, we looked at it from a sys- system-wide process. It wasn't just individual targeted Jim Adams goals. It was targeted as a district because of the pandemic. Uh, because of understanding that we would be, um, really, uh, having to be nimble and flexible throughout the entire year. Uh, we, yes, we have a few things that are, uh, on the plate, such as, um, our literacy program in the second year. Looking at our anti-racist education, those are, but those are still district-wide lens, um, components. So what I wanted to just share is obviously our first goal of the year was, was thinking about, um, our learning plans, uh, and the reopening of schools. And, uh, you know, we've got forty-five, forty-four days come Monday left of education, of actual days in school. So when, when we look at this, and I'm just going to scroll through it quickly, we, we talked about benchmarks and we've met these, with regard to the opening of schools, the crafting and redrafting of plans, uh, et cetera. So I'm not worried about this, this goal in particular. This standard, um, the, the second goal, when we talked about greater proficiency and understanding in diversity, equity, inclusion, social justice, anti-racism, Paul, to your point, this is one that's going to have to, it's going to roll over. It's going to be ongoing, uh, and it's going to be, as we've mentioned at our last meeting, it, certainly a, a topic for school committee to be heavily involved in and creating, um, a, a road forward, right? So while we're doing things, like there's a list of things that are being, that are happening at the high school with regard to, um, student handbook with regard to opportunities and classes. You know, the equi-, you know, Mike's participation, when we had the last group, the, the area group last week, last, uh, meeting present. We're doing a lot of things, but this is not a, a goal that's going to be met in one year. This is a, uh, a goal that's going to be across, period of time. Uh, like, so Dave, uh, one of these is Dave DeDrama, I was looking at the middle school. It's coming through, uh, not well here, but looking at math, uh, placement in the middle school and making sure that, that we're offering, and, and encouraging and moving our diverse population into, um, upper level math classes, uh, and science classes. Changing our literature to ensure that it's representative of not only of, uh, the cultures that we have within our community, as you know, it's changed dramatically and, uh, but a diverse, uh, set of authors and, and work, uh, AP and honors level courses and this, so this work is ongoing. That's what I want to say. Um, and then we talked a little bit about, um, our professional development for trauma. Um, we, we started the year with trauma-informed, um, professional development. We're still working through a number of these programs. You know, Jen Cutler's doing a great job, uh, with this goal, and it's really particular to Jen and, uh, the counseling department, um, uh, across all of the buildings. Uh, and then, as I mentioned before, the Lucy Cockens, you know, implementation, professional development, uh, we, you know, we're still in the middle of that. Uh, and there are pieces of it that, you know, I know, and there's been concern and conversation, uh, within the community. And Mike, I'll have you just, touch base on this, if you would, in a second, is that, you know, whenever we pick a unit of, uh, or not a unit, a, uh, a method of delivery of, of something such as literacy and using Lucy Cockens, they, they all come with some sort of deficiency. And, you know, it may be phonetic awareness. Uh, it could be, um, you know, we're not, we have to then supplement. And Mike, can you touch base on that piece? Because I think it's important the community understands that, that we recognize these things.
Yeah, we, we fully recognize it and it's one of the things that we, um, are, are working on bringing in foundations for that, for that exact reason. So, um, Mr. Reagan and I have been discussions about making sure that our K-two staff is trained in foundations, uh, beginning this summer. So we are working to, uh, bring someone in to help make that happen. Because we need to ensure that all students are getting the proper instructional, uh, work regarding phonemic awareness and phonics and some of the, that's one of the major weaknesses of the Lucy Cockens program. And we did know that, we did know going in that there were going to be some bumps there. Uh, and that's another reason why we're really excited about the potential of bringing in a literacy coach, especially a literacy coach who knows Lucy Cockens, because if they know it well, then they're going to know the good, the bad and the ugly. And they're going to be able to know, you know, what the weaknesses are and be able to help us and support us and ensuring that students are getting, um, the proper phonics instruction that they need, especially at that younger level.
And then our, our last goal that we set as a district and a community is, is the, uh, communication. Uh, and, um, we're well on target for, uh, the communication audit to be presented. It will not be in March. So I guess we're not on target, right? Uh, yesterday was the last day. Um, it'll be in May and, but, but it is, is coming. Uh, Liam Goldrick, uh, is, um, the individual leading the charge. He's, uh, sent me an email today. He's talked to a lot of people within the community. There are a couple of community forums. Uh, upcoming on the twelfth and the fourteenth at six thirty to eight, there's a link that I sent in an email last week and I will send again tonight for community members to participate, uh, in, um, conversation with regard to Ashland Public Schools and our communication strategy, our, um, you know, our, our deficiencies, things that we do well. So it's, it's, um, it will be met. This one will be met. So back to your question, Paul, there, yeah, there are two of the five that are really, need to be moved forward. And will continue to be implemented, uh, into the next year.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, even, even the one of them, uh, I would never have expected it to be, and, and it's, it's almost sort of perpetual goals. I, to call it even a goal is, 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 you know, you, you, you gotta chunk it up into, into steps and call those goals, but it's still be a continuous effort, obviously. So.
Yeah, and I, and I think, and to your point, that was last school committee, right? We talked about how, how we're going to approach it even as a district, district-wide lens. We just knew we were having some professional development directly related to it this year. And we haven't even touched base on, you know, all the other things that we've got going on, which is, you know, fun stuff, building a building.
Well, that's going on.
Questions, thoughts, concerns, preguntas, comentarios?
All right, we're good with that. And you guys, uh, please, uh, get everything to me before our next Thursday meeting. And then we will officially report back to Jim and that will be complete. So thank you for that. And on to the Driscoll Scholarship Committee appointment. We do this every year. Erin's done it the past couple at least. Um, and whether she wants to do that again, or whether there's somebody else that wants to be involved. I've done it before. I think Kathy's done it before. I don't think Paul can take on another thing. I don't want to speak for you. I think what it involves is one Zoom meeting, where you get together with a, a small committee and you review applications for this scholarship. And as a school committee member, you get to weigh in on who gets selected. So that's the job. And I will turn it over to you guys to speak up about who might want to volunteer this year.
I think I did it last year, Lori. Um, and I'm happy to do it again, but if somebody's really itching to do it, that's fine too.
I can go back to doing, I think, Mark, you stepped up because I was in the middle of my home sale at that time. So, um, I'm happy to step in and do it again.
It's fine with me.
I'm happy to have Erin do it. If, if you want to do it, that sounds great. That's fine.
Excellent. So we need a motion to approve Erin as well as the other folks on the committee with Erin. Who's got that motion?
Uh, I don't have that one with me.
It would be a motion to appoint Mary Lou Hunt, Lauren Jim Betty and Erin Williams to serve on the Driscoll Scholarship Committee for the current year.
So moved.
Second.
And then all in favor, Paul? Erin?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
An I for me. That passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome.
And then the super inten-, assistant superintendent update, Mike, have you got anything tonight? You're muted.
Sorry about that. I, I, I would like to just publicly, uh, acknowledge and thank the work of our CARES team at the high school, Clockers Against, uh, Racism and for Equity in Action. I think I may have butchered that acronym a little bit, but there are a group that's working hard, uh, to ensure that our, our community is making some, some substantive change, uh, at the high school. And recently on Monday, they hosted a wonderful event, a discussion about the documentary Thirteenth. And I, and I wanted to just publicly thank them for doing so, in particular the students that participated. The students included Johani June, Dee Rivera and Kyle Schiller, and they joined their, their faculty facilitators, Mary Nemeth, Erin LaChappelle and Corey McGann. And it really was a great, a great opportunity for community members uh, at the high school and, and from staff across the Ashland Public Schools to get together with some students and, and talk about, uh, race. So I, I appreciated that. So, but that was worth, a worthwhile thing to acknowledge here.
Thank you, Mike. I heard great things about it. Thank you all for involved, who coordinated that. Anybody have any questions or comments about that before we move on?
Well, I was going to do it, my members update, but I, I had joined that workshop. I thought that was great, Mike. I'm very impressed. Um, it was a nice presentation and there, um, there were breakout sessions too. So there was, you know, good dialogue. So we broke out in two different groups and then we'd come back and then have like a group dialogue. So I, I thought it was, I thought it was really good, Mike. I, I really liked the group.
Yeah, I, I participated for like the second half of it. I wasn't able to get in from the beginning. So so a little disjointed for me, but I thought it was a really well-structured program and I, um, can't say enough about the thoughtfulness of the kids.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to play out of Mike, there were a couple of other students who were there as well. I know, yeah, my widow was there and another student, you might, Min Nash. So there are, there are, there are a few other students who, who participated in and, um, you know, they just all had creative insights. You know, it's amazing to me, like, I, I still probably am guilty of that mindset of like, I'm older, I know more. You know, and, and I'm, I'm thinking, uh, that I'll have more perspective on the whole thing. And, and I never, never ceases to amaze me how much I learned from them, um, and perspective they're coming from. So they were, um, they were great. Um, I thought the program was, was fantastic. Look forward to seeing the, the future efforts that, uh, the group will see others.
And thanks, Mike, for inviting us to participate. I appreciate, we appreciate that.
Okay. And, and Mark, the reason I, I pointed out those three specific students is they were facilitators. So they actually planned the event, those three. So little kudos to them.
If I'd been on time, I would have known better.
Kathy, do you have warrant approvals tonight?
I do. Let me get it. I have it on my phone. All right. Between March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one and April first, twenty twenty-one, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of three hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy cents. This includes general fund expenses of two hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Evolving expenses of eighty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. Grant expenses of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. And meals tax expenses of fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. I also signed off on one million, ninety thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents of payroll.
Thanks, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Okay, on to the minutes. February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Does anybody have anything there?
No, I thought they looked good. I don't have anything.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
All in favor, Mark? Kathy?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Paul? An I for me. Thank you. March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Does anybody have anything on those minutes?
I just have one thing. I think they looked fine, other than in the roll call, they don't, I'm not listed. And then it's listed that I joined the meeting at seven thirty-five in the morning, but that's not what, that's not true. I was here from the beginning, so if they, we could just switch that.
Yeah, I mean, so, so was that, was that, uh, a capture of that, uh, technical issue you had?
That was last meeting where my battery died. Isn't that the one?
Right. So, so it might've been, did, was there a capture of you leaving and then coming back? It was kind of like, like if you left the room?
Well, this was a morning meeting and this happened at a night meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying. I don't think so. Does anyone remember that? Me not being there, but.
Yeah, I, I think that's an easy fix, Kathy, if you just want to send a, a note to Erin.
Sure, okay. Well, some losing.
You were there, right, for anything we may have voted on.
Yeah, okay.
So do we have a, a motion to accept the March twelfth, twenty twenty-one minutes as amended?
Moved.
One second.
All in favor, Paul? Erin? Mark? Kathy? An I for me. Uh, Jim, do we have any gifts and donations this evening?
You're muted, Jim.
You're on mute, Jim.
Sorry, letting the dog in my son. Uh, wait, we're on this together for a hundred dollars. Uh, HS Council Reality Fair. So it's a hundred dollars.
Excellent. Motion to accept the gift and donation?
Yeah, so, so moved.
All in favor, Erin?
Hi.
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul? I for me as well. Uh, any, any member updates this evening? Rahim, you want to share anything? What's going on at school? If you're there. And if not, we'll go right to you, Paul Kendall. Anything we need to know?
There must be.
Yeah, nothing really. Uh, so let's see, since our last meeting, the primary thing is we conducted the last two evenings. So I, I first want to thank the, uh, the CM Selection Subcommittee. So it's been a boatload of work going through all the, all the submissions. We had, like I said, we had eleven, um, responses to RFQ. We shortlisted that down to four. We had four proposals that we had to review. We went through four interviews over the last two evenings. We went through four interviews over the last two evenings, uh, finishing up at close to ten the first night, close to eleven last night. Um, and, uh, you know, so we're, we're in a position to make a recommendation, uh, to us, uh, to the. Building Committee on our, at our Tuesday meeting next week to, uh, aw- award, um, and, and approve our, our CM for the project and. So, and, and they're, they're gonna need hit the ground running because, uh, the. Design development, first design development estimate, uh, is the following week. Uh, and so April is a. Is a busy, busy month for, for the design team and, and the, uh, and the CM, uh, ahead of a, a, a May submission to the MSBA. So. Be on, be a, be, be on the lookout for an announcement of the CM, uh, next week.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else?
There's someone's gonna share. Oh, just that, um, I see Kathy and Eric talked about the event, uh, earlier in the week. Also, we did have a meeting with, um, the collective bargaining will. We have further update, we being Lori and myself and Jim, giving an update on that executive session in a few minutes.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else? All right, well, so I'm gonna move then to enter into executive session. Under section twenty-one, A-three, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect. On the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I declare. And not to return to open session, this is regarding the Ashland Educators Association Teacher Contract. Uh, and I will take the roll call vote for that. So starting with you, Aaron Williams?
Second at first.
Up. Yeah, thank you. Do we have a second? Mark? Yes, for you, Aaron. Mark, is, is there a yes after your second? And Kathy?
Yes, or I.
Paul? And yes for me. Um, and that concludes our meeting. We are moving into executive session. Jim, is there a separate link for that? I'm not sure.
Yeah, you have to. Uh, use the, I just sent you, uh, Paul Kendall sent a link, so please use his link. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So, uh, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See you next week. Bye-bye.